Okay, have Mr. Clark lead us in the pledge?
Would you be willing to lead us in the pledge?
Of course.
Absolutely. If you could rise and join me in the opening of the town council meeting, and if we could have Mr. Clark lead us in the pledge of allegiance, go to the mic there.
I'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Dude, we didn't lose you, huh? Okay, thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting of the town council. We're going through the call to order and pledge of allegiance. Announce, uh-oh. Too many things in here. Okay, by way of announcements, I have a page and a half. I've never had that before. Oh, do you want them back? Hey, wait a minute. Okay. We'll make it through it. The town offices will be closed on Thursday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. The town of Merrimack's Fourth of July festivities, schedule of events for 2019. The town of Merrimack's Fourth of July festivities are a public-private collaboration between the town of Merrimack, the Rotary Club of Merrimack, and the Merrimack Roadrunners Boosters Club. These groups are assisted by a number of other community businesses and organizations. On Wednesday, July 3rd, there's a patriotic concert at Abbey Griffin Park, performed by the Merrimack Concert Association. The event will be held from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Abbey Griffin Park. Merrimack Concert Association will be selling root beer floats during the event. Thursday, July 4th, a lot of things happening. The Sparkler Road, the Sparkler 5K Road Race is held every Fourth of July, starting at the YMCA in Merrimack, New Hampshire. The race starts at 8:00 a.m., followed by light refreshments and awards. Proceeding the race, we have added a kids' fun run near the finish line. Merrimack Rotary Club Pancake Breakfast. This year's annual pancake breakfast menu includes fluffy pancakes, scrambled eggs, sausage juice, and coffee. Gluten-free pancakes will be available. Breakfast will be held from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. and will be held at Merrimack High School. Tickets are $5.00 for adults, $4.00 for seniors, 62 and over, and children 3 to 12. Oh, $4.00 for seniors and children. Children 2 and under eat free, if they eat. Proceeds from the breakfast go toward the Rotary Club of Merrimack's support of local charitable organizations and scholarships, which they do a lot of good stuff for our town. The annual Fourth of July Parade. The town of Merrimack's annual Fourth of July Parade is organized by the Parks and Rec Department and is one of the larger Independence Day parades in the state of New Hampshire. The parade features a wide range of bands, militia units, clowns, local businesses, community organizations, and more. The parade begins at 1:00 p.m. at the Common Shopping Plaza, where Tractor Supply is, which is located at 515 Daniel Webster Highway. The parade travels south down Daniel Webster Highway, takes a right onto Babuuksek Lake Road, and travels past the Mascollo Elementary School, and then takes a left onto Ogara Drive. The parade concludes at Merrimack High School. The entire route is one and a half miles long. The Merrimack Rotary Club Independence Day Celebration Entertainment. The Rotary Club of Merrimack is proud to provide an exciting, family-friendly afternoon and evening of entertainment from 12:00 noon to 9:00 p.m. New this year, all activities will take place in the parking lot in front of Merrimack High School. Activities include a live stage event, food vendors, club and service organizations, children's entertainment, Rotary Club Dunk Tank, art contest, crafts and gifts, and live demonstrations, and more. The annual fireworks display. Grab your blanket and find a good spot at the high school in time for the show, which starts at 9:00 p.m. or when it's dark, somewhere around there. We are excited to announce that Atlas Provision, Pyro Vision Productions, Inc. has been contracted this year to put on a spectacular fireworks display. They are one of the leaders in the industry and put on hundreds of shows annually. It promises to be a first-class display. Friday, July 5th, continually, continue celebrating the Fourth of July festivities and join the Parks and Rec Department on Friday, July 5th, at our first free movie in the park of the summer. The movie will be held at Abbey Griffin Park, which is located behind Merrimack Town Hall. We will be showing Wreck-It Ralph 2: Ralph Breaks the Internet. The Lions Club of Merrimack will be sponsoring the movie and will be providing games and free hot dogs from 7:00 to 8:30, and the movie will begin at 8:30 p.m. Upcoming town council meetings, Thursday, July 18th, 7:00 p.m. in the Merrimack Thornton Room, where it's a regular meeting, and then Thursday, August 15th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Matthew Thornton Room, also a regular meeting. Eileen.
I don't have any announcements.
I'm gonna have to speak to Becky. If you'll excuse me for a minute so I can catch up. Okay. Comments from the press and public. Anybody wishing to address the town council can do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll go on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We'd like to recognize a retiring town employee. Town council will present an award to Nancy. I can never get your name right, Nancy. I apologize. Is this Loris?
Deloria.
Delorius. In recognition of her retirement after 21 years of full-time service with the town of Merrimack, Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office. Nancy is retiring on June 29th, 2019. I'm sure we'll miss her dramatically. Come on up to the... Diane, are you gonna speak?
Nancy began her employment with the town of Merrimack on June 1st, 1998. She was selected from a field of 42 applicants to fill an account clerk 2 position in the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office, a position she's held for 21 years. She was the second person in the department that I had the privilege to hire and is the first to fully retire. I was especially excited about hiring Nancy, as she had been working in the Nashua City Clerk's Office and came to us with several years of experience, which is extremely rare. Including her time, employment in Nashua, Nancy is retiring with 27 years of municipal experience. It was just a short time ago, just last fall, that we were here to recognize Nancy for achieving 20 years of service with the town. Little did I know then, when I wished her many more years of service with the town, that she would be leaving us so soon. For those of you who know and remember Ruth Liberty, I should have known something was up when Nancy said she wasn't going to be a Ruth Liberty. Nancy will be missed by all of us in the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Department and by the town as a whole. Over the years, Nancy developed relationships with most all of her customers and held a special soft spot for the elderly. It is evident many customers will miss seeing her when they visit Town Hall to take care of business, as those who have been aware of her impending retirement have stopped by to wish her well, have offered best wishes to her, and we've heard from a number of customers on her retirement. When you work day in and day out with someone, especially on a long-term basis, they become more than just a coworker or an employee. Bonds are forged, and they become extended family and friends. Over the years, we've celebrated not only professional achievements, but personal ones as well, and it's been especially fun getting to know you, watching your children grow up, your families grow, and grandchildren welcomed. As I told you, I am extremely jealous of all of your new free time, but I know that you will enjoy it, especially with your family. Nancy, thank you for all of your, all of your many years of hard work and dedication to the town, to the department, and for all of the support and assistance to me. It is appreciated, and it has truly been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
I wish you the very best, and no matter where the road, no matter which road you choose to travel, I hope you enjoy every minute of it. You've earned it, you deserve it, and we will, we will miss you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
And of course, we couldn't let you leave without giving you another plaque from the town. To Nancy, to Delorius. Upon the occasion of your retirement from the town of Merrimack, Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office, in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for 21 years, your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty from June 1 of 1998 to June 29 of 2019, presented by the town council and the town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Appreciate it.
You wanna say something?
I do. Well, I can't leave without saying goodbye. It's been a privilege to work for the town of Merrimack for 21 years. Diane hired me, as she mentioned, and it's been a rewarding experience. I've learned a lot, and I met and enjoyed meeting so many great people from the town. I would like to thank everyone for their well wishes and encouragement for my future plans to come, and whatever it may be, I've, I just don't know yet, but I'm sure it'll, I'll figure it out. And thank everyone for coming tonight, and I'll be around. I won't just, I won't just wander off. I'll be back. Thank you.
Excellent. We don't, we don't have any appointments for this evening or public hearings. Legislative updates. We don't have any legislators here tonight. Town managers report. She does have something to say.
Another short and sweet one. The Public Works Department has been working hard to complete the beach volleyball courts at Watson Park and expect them to be ready for use on July 4th. People are already wanting to claim them for leagues and things like that, which can't be, so they're, they're to be used by the public at their, their own, whenever they want to. I don't know if Nancy or Barbara wanted to say anything about our meeting with Clark this morning or not, no? Okay. The only thing, so we met with, we met, we met with Clark Friesy, Assistant Commissioner for Department of Environmental Services, who we had expected to unveil the mystery numbers for the PFAS that the state is planning, the DES is planning to present to the legislature. And he came here and he gave us this handout, and we're all going, "Where's the numbers? Where's the numbers?", and there were no numbers. So, it was, hm? However, they did tell us that the numbers would be significantly lower than the ones that they had previously given, and that they were basing their, their recommendations on the Minnesota report, that they actually had developed a model in order to come up with the numbers. So, he's gonna be sending out a press release tomorrow, and we'll make sure that we put it on the front page of our website. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Anything else you wanna add?
No, that was pretty much.
Okay.
And just to let you know, MBP was also present at that meeting.
Okay. They learnt as much as you did.
That's right.
And no more, so that's a good thing. We have no consent agenda for tonight. Under old business, the first item, do we wanna maybe move number one in new business to the forefront?
The MRA is on its way. They'll be here like in 20 minutes, so.
If that's, without objection, we're gonna move number one in our new business up to now, and look for Michael Clark to present us with the proposed Eagle Scout project to build an information kiosk at the dog park at Wasserman Park. Are you prepared to do that? Awesome. I thought he did, but, you know, his motto is be prepared, and I'm sure he is.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. As was previously mentioned, I'm here tonight to present to you my proposal for my Eagle Scout project and informational kiosk at the dog park at Wasserman. Now, I'm gonna start by telling you all a little bit about myself, my motivations to do this project for the dog park, the design that I've come up with to meet the needs of the kiosk, my proposed location for the kiosk, how much I think it's going to cost.
Can you point that?
Of course. How much I think it's going to cost, and when I'm planning on being done. Now, I have allotted some time at the end for questions, but feel free to interject if you have anything to ask. Now, my name is Michael Clark, and I'm going into my junior year at Merrimack High School.
That's not your high school picture, is it?
I am a leader on the MHS first robotics team, a bass clarinetist in the MHS marching band, a varsity member of the MHS science Olympiad team, and I've been an active member of Troop 424 since I joined in fifth grade. I'm currently a Star Scout, finishing up my last requirements for life, which is why I'm here with you tonight, seeking my approval so I can hit the ground running on my Eagle project as soon as I get it. This is my Eagle advisor, Mr. Eric Faust, and my biggest motivation for this project comes from being a dog person. This is my dog Una, she's a two-year-old German Shepherd.
Gorgeous.
Now, Parks and Rec wanted a platform to post important messages about the dog park. This needed to be secure, lockable, weatherproof year-round, and visible to all dog park visitors. So, with my expertise in SolidWorks, a 3D modeling program that I have honed over this past year of robotics, I was able to mock up a whole 3D CAD model and came up with the overall dimensions of eight and a half feet tall by six and a half feet wide. It matches the same aesthetic as the existing sign, which can be seen in the bottom right of the screen. There is a large acrylic window measuring 36 and a half by 61 inches for optimal viewing area. The rear access door to access said window is hinged and completely lockable. The posting surface is lined with foam and cork laminate. It is weather resistant, painted with a weather resistant paint, and all the wood is pressure treated. The supporting posts are cemented three and a half feet below grade, and the sign at the top matches the existing sign, designating it as the Dog Park Informational Kiosk. Now, my proposed location, as you can see on the left in aerial view, the existing sponsor board is on the right, circled in red, and my proposed location would be, with a closer-up shot, near the dumpster to the left of the dog park, facing out. The boulders that currently line that area would be moved ideally closer into the dumpster, creating a curve that would protect the sign from plows and what have you. Now, taking my 3D model and breaking it down into a bill of materials, I went to Home Depot and got an estimate, and I came out around $350. Adding a 20% contingency, that came to an estimated total of $775. Now, I was approved by the Parks and Rec and recommended to come up to present to you all on the 19th of this month, and pending your approval tonight on the 27th, I will finish up my life rank, allowing me to present to my troop committee in August, moving on to the district Eagle Board in September, and beginning my fundraising between November and December of this year. After that, I will begin construction between January and March of 2020. Finally, depending on when the ground thaws, I intend to break out and erect the kiosk between April and May of 2020. Questions?
So, a lot of times, people have come and talked to us about what they plan to do for fundraising. Do you have any thoughts at this point?
Of course. Ideally bake sales, and probably leaning more heavily on those, as car washes are not optimal during the wintertimes, but ideally bake sales and possibly some kind of sponsored dinner, somewhere along those lines.
Where might you do those?
The bake sales ideally outside of Shaw's Market Basket, Tractor Supply, wherever we'll have me, and possibly some kind of dinner at any venue that might have me, a local church, or even maybe the National Division game, depending on their schedule.
That's awesome. You sound like you're extremely well aware of what you're working on, and that's very encouraging. You have a good handle of what you're working with, so thank you very much for your presentation. Anybody have any questions? Lon?
Not a question, a comment. Just as competent a presentation tonight as it was in front of the Parks and Rec, and I thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly like, I absolutely like what's in the water here in Merrimack, because we get to see Eagle Scout presentations here on a regular basis, and obviously, there's something, there's something with the level of interest that the scouting, the boys in scouting provide today, to be able to rise to this particular level to, again, come to us to make a presentation such as yours. I think it's the kiosk gonna balance out the dog park tremendously, and a valuable project for everybody that uses the dog park, and I certainly urge you to be commended, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck with your project as you, as you pursue Eagle. It's a tremendous accomplishment, it really is, and like I've said to everybody else here, and I don't mean to be redundant, but it is deliciously redundant, is, this is the best part of the job. This is the best part of being in the council, getting to hear presentations like yours, so thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Peter, do you have something?
Michael, nice presentation, first of all, and thanks for doing this work. I know, having been on the Parks and Rec Committee, that the folks on the Dog Park Committee, I'm sure, are very excited about this project, 'cause I know we talked about this at one point as a goal for the dog park. So, thanks again for doing this service for the community.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Two things. One, I've said it before, and you've done it tonight, you knew your stuff. You didn't have to refer to your paperwork, and it's always, it presents very well when you know your material, and you can do it off the top of your head, and you've practiced, so that shows it. Second thing is, I wanna thank Mr. Faust. You've been involved with these Boy Scouts for your own kids, I know, but also for other students, other children, kids, and I know the amount of time, and I wanna thank you for the service you give the community as well.
My pleasure, this is the...
I know. It pays off when you see good things like this, but you're absolutely right. Job well done.
Thank you.
So, at this point, Michael, is there anything that you need from us, other than just approval of your moving forward, or?
That be it.
Okay. Can we get a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council accept Boy Scout Michael Clark's proposed Eagle Scout project to build an informational kiosk at the dog park at Wasserman Park, and that furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign the necessary paperwork to push the process forward for Scout Clark.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any other questions or comments on that? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Thank you very much, Michael, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And I failed to mention that Finley is excused at the moment. We're hoping he'll show up later this evening, but if not, we'll excuse him the whole meeting. Oh, okay. He's out and won't be able to make it, so he's excused for tonight. So, we're six tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck with that. Moving along to the second item in our new business is committee appointments submitted by Town Council Chair Tom Kanig and Vice Chair Bill Boyd. Town council to consider appointments with the following individuals to town committees pursuant to Charter Article 4-8. We have multiple committees, all mostly being renewed for the upcoming year. Paul Drone for Ag Commission, Gage Perry, Gina Rosati, and Eric Starr for Conservation Commission, Gigi Jennings, Ralph Guerins, Laura James for, or, excuse me, those two for Heritage Commission, Laura James, Christine LaVoy for Parks and Rec, and then Robert Best, Alister Mills, and Paul McLaughlin for Planning Board, and Bill Cummings for Town Center Committee.
Move approval.
Motion made and seconded. Just to speak to that, do you wanna speak to it?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I wanna thank all of these individuals for their continual service to the town for their respective boards. There are so many different things going on in town that requires volunteers to step up to make sure that we're continuing to provide a, an amazing quality of life for the people that live here in Merrimack. So, with that being said, these people, again, they're up for, they're all up for reappointment. We've got some new names here as well, so I wanna thank them for stepping up and for participating in these boards, and also use this opportunity as a friendly reminder that we do have vacancies to a lot of these boards. So, go to MerrimackNH.gov and see if there's anything that you'd like to sign up and participate in. With Gina Rosati in the audience, I do wanna thank Gina personally again for the work that you've put in, in this community, as it relates to not just the Conservation Commission, but PFAS issues and the NED several years ago, so thank you very much again for your continual commitment to the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? We did have the opportunity to interview the members of the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board that are up for renewal, which is a requirement by the, by the town council, that we interview them specifically, because they're quasi-judicial boards or have more of an impact in other people's lives. That's not to say that any of these other committees are not critical and important to the town, they all add to the quality of life in Merrimack, and we very much appreciate all of our volunteers. But it was a pleasure to be able to speak with Gina and Eric, and Gage relative to Conservation Commission, and to Robert, Bob Best, Alister Mills, and Paul McLaughlin. Paul is coming back to the Planning Board. He had to take a leave from the board for a few years while he was working. His schedule wouldn't allow him to do any, but he changed jobs, and now he wants back in, so we welcome him back. Without any other comments, do we wanna take a vote on that motion? All those in favor of these committee appointments as outlined, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Gina, if you wanna come, we can go ahead and swear you in. So, if you would, you're gonna recite that piece there. Raise your right hand.
Hi Gina Rosati, do you solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the Conservation Commission, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Okay, good. So, we have a whole bunch of those to sign, they're being passed around. Those that weren't able to make it tonight, if you could stop by the Town Clerk's Office at some time in between now and your next meeting, because officially, we have to swear you back in again to the office, or for those new members, either as alternates or as full-time, we'll move forward from there, they need to sign in as well. Okay. So, Holly's here.
Yeah, Brian said he was coming, but when I texted him that I was here, he said he would be fifteen minutes.
Okay. We'll keep going, and we'll come back to you when you're here.
Okay. Thank you.
So...
Mr. Cummings is here. If you want to swear him in.
Oh, I'm sorry. You walked in on me.
The Town Center Committee.
Yes.
Yes.
Back to me. You weren't sitting there before, were you?
No, I was not.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to think I totally overlooked.
Not at all. Did I miss my cue?
Yes.
You were about thirty seconds late. That's all right. We can still get there. Okay. We voted to accept you. Oh, thank you. I guess that's why I'm standing here now. We swore you in. I mean, swear you in. So, if you could raise your right hand and to the microphone, read that portion there. I've noticed mine already. Oh, yes, I do. Thank you. I, Bill Cummings, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and reform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the Town Center Committee, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You made it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for yours.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else? That's all right. These ones have been passed around? Okay. So, next on the agenda is proposed easements. Three fifteen, Daniel Webster Highway. Town Council to consider the proposal of three easements on Tax Map four D dash four slash oh forty-three dash one for town access, proposed drainage, and existing sewer infrastructure, and authorize a town manager or her designate to execute any and all documents which may be necessary. Were you going to speak to that, or please?
Good evening. Kevin Anderson with Meridian Land Services on behalf of Neighbor Works of Southern New Hampshire, who will soon own the property formally of the YMCA, requesting the council authorize three easements for signature. Two of them are new easements, and one of them is a correction easement. The first easement is an access easement, which will allow a snowplow truck to turn around without having to back onto the private development itself. The second one, the property itself is, has a drainage pipe that goes through it, which collects water from Daniel Webster Highway Continental and the on and off ramps of the FE Everett. There's no easement associated with that. It's dilapidated in shape. A new pipe as part of this development will be constructed, and therefore, a new easement for the town to maintain that drainage pipe. And lastly, more importantly, is there's a sewer collector main that runs through the property. The easement describing that sewer main is very poorly done. It's off by eleven feet in some locations. We're going to center it on the existing sewer structure. That's just a corrective easement. Really, that is all I'm here for the, for the board for today.
Okay. This, obviously, has all been discussed through the Planning Board and the site development plan and all that stuff.
Correct. We've gone through the Planning Board, zoning board. We've got all of our state permits in place. The properties can be purchased. Closing is next week, so imminent.
Very good.
Construction will start a week after, I would imagine.
Do you have anything to add, Eileen?
The only one, thing that I wanted to say is, we, as Kevin, right, had said, we have gone through the whole process. Everyone has approved it that needs to approve it. And your role is obviously to ask whatever questions you want, but primarily to authorize me to sign for these easements that they're giving, not that they're taking.
Right. And at least two of them existed already, but they're being corrected in their location.
One is being corrected. Two are new.
Oh, two are new.
More importantly, that drainage line, there was no easement ever associated with that. So, that's an important new easement that we'll be giving to the town.
Right. And the town will be maintaining that as well.
Correct.
Right. So, it's an access and maintenance easement.
Yes, it is.
Very good. Is the developer fixing it up, or is the town fixing it up?
They're actually going, it's a dilapidated thirty-inch corrugated metal pipe that's in very poor shape. We'll be proposing a new HDPE pipe that's going to be just off of it, which will allow us to work with our development. Plenty of room to maintain it. It'll be a new structure, a new pipe, so long longevity out of it.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To the developer, and to you for designing it, I'm sure, so.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can call for a motion. Nancy?
I'd like to move to authorize the town manager...
Turn to my car.
Thank you. To authorize town manager Eileen Cabanau to sign approval of three easements requests on map four D dash four, lot forty-three dash one, for town access, proposed drainage, and existing sewer infrastructure.
Second.
Motion made by Nancy and seconded by Barbara. Any other comments?
Does that cover what you need, Eileen?
Is that good, Kevin?
That's perfect.
As far as you know. Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed or abstaining? That passes six zero zero. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Seeing Brian here. Are you ready to go? We'll move back to old business number one, which was the only one under old business. Town Council, oh, no, we're not that one. Town Council to review the current contract that expires on June thirtieth with the Merrimack Youth Association, and also discuss a potential follow-on contract. Eileen or Paul, did you want to?
Whoever you would prefer. Paul, do you want me to do it, or do you want to do it? Okay.
For me, or for somebody else? Oh, there's a bunch. So, I'm giving you a handout. This handout is for your backup material, similar to, like, when we're at the retreat, all that backup information. I'll give you the abridged version. On May fifteenth, we received a letter from the MYA, from the auditors, Plazek and Sanders, a communication letter, basically stating that they were withdrawing from their engagement due to several factors. On June eleventh, the town manager and myself met with the auditing firm to discuss their findings. As a way to gain assurances, we then talked to the MYA and met with them on the twelfth to ask for registration backup, because that was one of the major issues in the Plazek and Sanders letter that is attached there, one of their findings. The MYA dropped off the material to me, my office, on the twenty-first of June. Excuse me. And the finance department, myself and my deputy, who both CPAs and who have done auditing in the past, have been looking over the information. I want to bring to the point that all we were looking at was the registration revenues. We did not look at any other aspects that would have been performed during an audit. We were just looking for the registration information. And another key point is, we're trying to reconcile the June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, registration revenues, which took place from July first, two thousand seventeen, to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, almost two years ago now. In doing so, we looked at six of the seven programs that, that we got, we got information on all seven of the programs. The eighth program is the executive board that the town funds in the grant. Well, we didn't look at the executive board, because they do not have any registration data. So, we looked at six of the seven programs to see if we can reconcile what was given to us versus what was in the deposits. Of those six programs, three of the programs we could reconcile totally. Three of the programs, we could not reconcile and had additional questions that needed to be answered. And looking at the budget that was requested in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, from the MYA, it's about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is what the registration money would be that they were looking for in revenues. If we take those same three programs that we could look and tie, reconcile the registrations, it's about twenty-nine percent of the budget that, of the registration money, with about seventy-two percent that we could not tie. So, at this time, we believe that there are red flags in the way registrations are being handled, as mentioned by Plazek and Sanders. And it's up to the board, council right now. There is about forty-two thousand dollars, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars that is still owed to the MYA for last year. Back in, take a step back, back in June of two thousand fourteen was the first audit that the council has asked the MYA for. Each year, from June two thousand fourteen, the audit was due on October thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. The town received the first audit on June ninth, two thousand fifteen, so about seven months late. However, the auditor gave a disclaimer of opinion on that, due to the fact that could not obtain sufficient appropriate evidence in which to base an opinion on, meaning that, in layman's terms, that they couldn't reconcile the backup material they received with the general ledger. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, which was performed by a different auditor, they received the same disclaimer of opinion. They were late one month in getting us the information, and then sixteen and seventeen, they were late five months. This year, June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, the audit was due on the eighteenth of, thirty-first of October, two thousand eighteen. We received the letter of, a management letter or a communication letter, and a withdrawal of an engagement from the auditor, basically six months after the fact, when it was due, the audit was due. Every year, the town council has always waited till we receive the audit to release the money from November to the end of the year. Right now, we're sitting on forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars of the MYA's allotment for two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
You guys want to add anything to what he just said, or comment?
I want to say that...
It's all, it's all right.
It is. Okay. Part of the reason, I think, Paul, that you can't reconcile is because some of the money that we received in is for the fundraising and stuff that we talked about the other day. So...
Some of it is, but we could not tie the registration software, credit card accounts directly to the deposits in the bank statement.
Which programs were you looking at? Do you know?
We're not looking at many programs yet.
Okay. Sorry. So, although on paper, the audit doesn't look well, I think it's just because we have volunteers running the programs. I originally thought that all the registrations that were being put through the programs were via credit card system. So, there's no flaw in that. You log in, you sign your kid up, you put your credit card information in, and they can't touch that system. It's not a checking account. It's just a means of receiving money and putting it into the TD Bank account. So, originally, I thought that that was the system. So, I didn't really work on registration and educating on reconciling registration, because I thought when you log in, you sign in, you use your credit card, and it was all, it went into your bank account. You did your reconciliation based on the credit card information that you get. And each program handles their own registration and treasurer. So, I was more focused on the expenses and the bank accounts, and making sure that there were ties to who was paying and who was reconciling and all that such stuff. Now, I realize that some of the accounts, they take cash and check. And I believe they are reconciling, but on paper, because unfortunately, they're not all treasurers, they don't understand the importance of the processes and stuff in place. So, I didn't focus as much on revenue, because I thought it was all logging into a website and handling registration that way. But I have learned that some of the programs, you can register online, but you pay via check or credit card, or in some cases, square in some of the other accounts. So, I, I can only say that I truly believe that they're all, I mean, the revenue is the revenue, but I think somewhere along the lines, they don't understand that, you know, programs start in September, but they're receiving money in, in July and June, you know, June before the end of the year. So, had I told them about it, they might have thought about it differently. But again, they're, they're handling it the way that they would handle their house account, as opposed to a business account. And I don't truly believe that all the treasurers are actually treasurers. They're just people who are trying to help out and do the right thing. So, I am saying that I don't think that there's anything going on, but from an audit perspective, they, I guess they didn't receive adequate paperwork in order to reconcile. But I know of the programs that he checked, there are a lot of the programs that we've had new treasurers come in, and they are reconciling their own programs. But for the, some of the programs, the treasurers aren't really accounting people. So, I believe that they're receiving the money and balancing it, but it may not be tying because the overlap in years, registration, who registers, and what year it overlaps. So, it's hard to...
I guess if this was the first time you were doing it, I'd say...
Right.
Let's get better. But this is the fourth year that we've been trying to do this.
No, I know. And I didn't focus on revenue. So, unfortunately, you know, I do feel to blame, because I didn't educate them that way. I was thinking our problem was with expensing and approving and that kind of thing. So, I really focused on that stuff, which I think, in the audit, that was fine, because that's what I was focused on, more making sure that the processes of who's approving expenses, and our backup, and that sort of thing, because I thought the registration was more online. So, I thought there was no way for that to really have any impact as far as being fraud, or whatever we think might be going on with that. So...
Eileen, did you have something?
Well...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this came up, and I've coached, my kids have been through the program. The MYA is a wonderful organization. And this has given me heartache to see this. I'm concerned that I see you sitting here, and I'm hearing words of, I believe and I think, and there's a lot of money involved here, and that deeply concerns me. I'm not saying that there's anything amiss, but what I'm saying is, is that we've got an accounting firm that won't finish an audit, and that's a red flag to them. And so, I think that we have to act responsibly as a group. I know we've got a proposed three-year contract here that doesn't include the funding, but we want to still make sure we take care of the kids, the fields for the kids and stuff. What I'm thinking is, I'm wondering if, and one of the key aspects I'd add is the hiring of a bookkeeper to clear up any of these issues, so you guys don't have to go through this. But I guess what I'm thinking is, this is a proposed contract for three years, and I'm wondering if we go with the same wording for a year, and then see if you guys can take care of that issue. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that. I mean, we've gone with three-year contracts, and I'm not sure why, and maybe some of the more senior council members... And maybe some of the more senior council members could explain to me why and maybe, but you know, I'll throw that question out to the group.
Eileen, did you want to add to that?
So I'm not a political person, so I'm going to talk from an accounting perspective, not that I'm CPA. But I am very concerned about the dismissive reaction to this. Every year for five years, you've never gotten an opinion because of the revenues, not because of the expenditures, but because of the revenues. And now a whole nother year has passed and those same auditors will not come back and do the audit for the year ended in three days. So we're talking about two years ago. Now, Paul has gone way above and beyond the call of duty. He's met with you, he's met with, he's gone over to your office, he's tried to get information. He called the auditors, he asked them questions, he asked you questions. And you know, the answer is, it's one, it's one group that's not providing the information, but that's not so. It was almost all the groups. So I just, there's $500,000 a year that goes through this fund. And the council has, you know, fiduciary responsibility for the amount of money that they take of taxpayers' money to make sure that that money is spent properly. And the last thing anyone would want to do would be to have MYA forfeit the, you know, the contribution. But then again, five years?
I haven't been here for five years.
I'm not talking about you, Holly. I'm not talking about you, Holly specifically.
No, that's fine. No, 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 I just didn't want to take responsibility for all five years. I really, it's a lot of work. But I do really feel that we're dealing with individuals who are just volunteers. They're not treasurers. So it's hard for me because from an executive board perspective, we're not running their program for them. I am guiding them. So I only know what they come to me with issues and I resolve those issues. But unless I sit on their board, I don't know how they're handling their stuff. So as the executive board, we're supposed to offer guidance to all the programs, which I have. But if I don't know there's a problem, and I have to say, in our defense, previous auditors were not really letting me know what the problems were. They might have said revenue and all of the other stuff. But I have to say that this past year was a real big eye-opener for me because they actually came down to my level and explained what the problems were. And other previous auditors weren't really willing to work with me. I mean, I've always said, where are the issues? What do I need to work on? Tell me. And they wouldn't. They were just throwing rules and regulations and all kinds of other stuff at me. So it was harder to understand where they thought the issues were. So I can only do what I think is a problem. And I thought registrations weren't the issue. I thought it was spending. So I put the rules and regulations and policies in place to make sure that there were approval levels for what was being spent and what wasn't.
I, again, I just want to stress that I'm not talking about you, Holly. I don't know you, but it's just an impossible position to put the town council in year after year after year. And there was a reason for asking for the audits to begin with, which we all know. So I, I still don't hear any taking of responsibility or, you know, having any sense of urgency about correcting things. We also found that from the auditors, that there are a couple of PayPal accounts with people with debit cards.
One PayPal, no debit card.
They said two, and they said they were debit cards.
No, that's not.
They said there was a potential that they could use it to purchase.
Yeah, there aren't debit cards.
Well, the debit cards are with the bank accounts.
Okay, so they have debit cards for all the bank accounts. It's just, it's way, way, way too loose for way, way, way too long. That's just my two cents.
Peter, to start to answer your question, and we'll probably get through it over time, I think the three-year contract was just an effort to try and not have to do this every year and sit down and legalize everything. And so we tried to generalize it a bunch. In the contract, it said that we would provide the amount of money that was allocated in the budget rather than trying to identify a certain specific amount each year or something like that. So the contract with the Adult Community Center is three years and other things like that. It's just been kind of an ongoing historical thing. There's no problem with going to one year, other than the fact that it just makes everybody do it all over each year.
I guess my thought was, my thought process was do a one year. And if things can get, the household cleaning can get done, the bookkeeping and everything, and they can come back to us with a bookkeeper and an audit, then we move forward with a three-year contract following that. You know, I, I tend to think that the money that hasn't been awarded because the, now, am I correct? The money hasn't been awarded because the audits haven't been done. That money's gone. But moving forward, you know, I don't know. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about going one year with this existing contract, when the contract written up without the funding, but and see what happens. I don't know.
The caveat or whatnot in the contract is that either side could modify it with an agreement between the two terms at any point in time. So even if we went with a three-year, the line is in there, very clearly stating that we could negotiate if we wanted to. I mean, if both sides were interested in doing that. I don't think we've ever had an adversarial situation in that regard. So whether we went with one or three, it really, I think, is somewhat immaterial. If we decided to make a change a year into it, we could all get together and make that change. Barbara, did you have something you wanted to add? Earlier, I thought, I saw your hand up.
No, I didn't put my hand up, but I'm, you know, being one of the newer members on the council, I don't have the history. So what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is that this has been a five-year kind of ordeal to try to work to get the information needed to be able to do an audit. I understand perfectly well what you're going through. My father and mother were in Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts for eons. They weren't passing, you know, quarter of a million dollars or half a million dollars' worth of trade back and forth, but they still had to go through audits to ensure that the money was accounted for. You know, as Eileen was saying, we have a fiduciary responsibility because we're giving you taxpayer dollars. So it's not like, you know, you know, if I could write you a check today for that, I would. And then we wouldn't, you'd have your money. But I can't, I can't even allow a year, seeing how it's been five years in the making and with, you know, this type of discussion happening prior to this. So I'm almost willing to say, you know, let's talk about what we had as far as providing the support and then come back to us in a year. Show us, prove to us, regain our trust that the money is being handled appropriately, that you can account not only for the debits, but also the income that is properly coming through on all of those programs. Because, you know, as everyone, we're all having a like heartburn here because this is not something we want to do, but we have to do. That's my.
Okay, Nancy, do you have?
Well, I have been here for the five years. It's very disappointing to me, and again, please don't take it personally because you're right. It's not just you. But I think the council has always given the benefit of the doubt, the MYA, exactly for the reasons you said, Barbara. Because we do think it's a terrific organization. We do want to be able to support it financially as well as every other way. But I've had enough personally. I think at this point, you have to prove it to me. And that what I'm suggesting is, hold on a second, you'll have your chance. What I'm suggesting is, I think what Pete's implying. I think we should do a one-year contract, not give the money. Give the year to get a bookkeeper or whatever it is to demonstrate to us that finally something's being done. Now, I'm not saying, you're talking a half a million dollars here. The public needs to know that that's the kind of money that has to be audited. What do we do as account, you have to. It's for your own good. And you have to be able to find a method to be able to maintain the trust that you have. And to us, to me, I just, my personal opinion is that you have to show me. Now, if you can show me that there's been, and for the five years, Paul's been available, please call on me. All these things have been offered. And yet, all of these auditing firms have said the disclaimer, well, we really can't tell you if it's good or bad because we don't have enough data. What is that? That's five years. So what I'm suggesting is that we do a one-year contract with the bookkeeper, maintaining the fields, all that other stuff that we do, and set a time certain where we come back and evaluate. And it doesn't have to be 100%? No. But if it's damn well close to that or leading to that, I'd be the first one to say, okay, let's get back on here. That's my opinion.
Okay, Bill?
Question for Paul. As it stands right now, if they don't meet the contractual requirements regarding the audit, is my understanding that they're going to be two years behind with the audit? Or is it just one year behind?
They're one year behind now, and in three days, they'll be two years behind because they will not have those reconciliations completed.
Okay, so the follow-up would be, is it possible within the next year to, and I probably shouldn't use this word, it's the only word that comes to mind, to forensically do an audit for the past three years and have it, have it meet the requirements that you feel could pass snuff with this, with this body?
You are correct, forensic is the wrong word. The, I believe the money would be better spent getting a bookkeeper in there and having that person or that company set it up and start with their policies and moving forward. Do I think that the programs can go back now and reconcile their registration revenue? It's going to be tough for them, especially because they had changeover and some of them have closed some of the accounts and opened up other accounts to take registration in. One of the other problems is that each program has its own registration software. So it's not even across the board. So if you get into Program Y, you're looking at registration software that tells you everything. You get into Program Q, you get the information, but it's in a way different format. And, you know, it could be out in ZZland on an Excel spreadsheet to get the information you need.
But this is, this is kind of the same discussion that we had some five years ago.
And every year's.
So why, so why are we entertaining a one-year contract? This is what I, this is what I don't understand.
As a published of what?
I would, I'd rather do, you know, I'm looking at, you know.
Well, we have to say the fields this time.
Well, obviously, it would be, it'd be an agreement for the fields and for oversight on their advertising. Okay? Whether or not we want to include the bookkeepers as part of that agreement is, is a matter of debate. The thing that, the thing that concerns me is that $72,000 was potentially allocated. But in looking at the budgets that were provided by Paul, you know, 40%, 40% of that $72,000, looking at the 2018, 2019 budget, was allocated to the executive board, which in a way, and I could be wrong, that, you know, violates the spirit of paragraph six. It says that the MYA shall allocate the afforded payments for direct program support, i.e. uniforms, equipment, officials. In other words, we're taking this subsidy and we're directing it directly to the kids and not directly to whatever the executive board, board does. So to me, there's, there's that point that, that concerns me as well. And Eileen, it's okay.
Just to be fair, as far as the executive board is concerned, it is that $25,000, which is allocated to the executive board, is primarily for an audit, for the audit. Most of it's for the audit, which.
So that begs the question, what have they done with the money for the last two years?
They paid for the audit that says, because the auditors come, they spend hours and hours and hours. And they have billable hours and they come and they have no results, but they still have to pay. So that's what.
You know, my inclination is, and I, like, like Peter here. You know, my wife and my sister participated in the softball program. Matter of fact, Finley's wife coached, coached my daughter. And we got Bill Cummings here in the audience, and he's one of our volunteers. And it's my, you know, we ask our volunteers to participate in the community and mindful of the fact that the MYA is completely made up of volunteers. I just, I'm, I'm at the point, like Nancy, where I'm disappointed. I think we've taxed Paul's time and Eileen's time long enough. I think they are a private organization. They are close to a half a million dollar organization without our subsidy. And I'd rather enter into a three-year agreement that provides fields, that gives us oversight over the advertising and say, say thank you and go out and continue to do the work that you do, which is providing, you know, athletic and social activities for the youth of our community. And if they, if we want to revisit that issue at some particular point, you know, it's certainly the council's prerogative to revisit it. But from where I sit right now, I can't, I can't do a one-year contract. I really can't. I would rather lock in the fields, oversight on the advertising, and move on and let them run the organization as they see fit. Thank you.
Ryan, you had something you wanted to add?
Well, to be clear, what Paul had said about the trying to reconcile all the three programs, I don't understand any of that. I'm not a financial guy. I can't even balance my checkbook. Okay? I don't understand how, so are you saying that there's $47,000 that's missing? Or are you saying you just can't, you don't have backup for those registrations?
I'm saying, I'm not saying there's any money missing. I can't tell you that 100% though. What I can tell you is that the deposits for registration doesn't match what should be deposited for registrations, whether they're deposited in a different format than just coming across as a credit card fee. Right now, we could not balance what is in the registration software that we got for the registrations versus what the deposits were. I'm not saying any money is missing. I don't know that. 100% I cannot.
So out of the $47,000, how much can you balance?
Forty-seven. Out of, out of the three programs, basically $61,500. Three programs out of $217,000 that was budgeted for registrations.
That's the 27%?
That's the 28%.
So 28% you could reconcile.
Correct.
The rest you can't.
Can't. Need more information or? And we didn't do one, we didn't do one program as well. But this is after Tom and I spent two days, basically, going through everything and knowing that we have a fiscal year that ends tomorrow.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm on, new and old and whatever information. Like several already mentioned, I've been involved or was involved with the MYA program when my daughters were young. It's part and parcel of the fabric of this community. And it, we find ourselves pointing fingers or telling people, hey, get with it. And that, that sounds so easy until you think about, as I said, the kids and what may happen. I'm a little concerned about talking about a three-year period. And more in line with Counselor Albert's look at. And more in line with Counselor Albert's look at one year because I've been aware of this problem, not involved, but aware of it, because I keep myself involved or informed. And everything that's been said about the last five years points to the fact that a three-year duration, council changes, the MYA executive board and coaches and volunteers change, where are we? Right where we are tonight. So I'm a little, the length of time putting it out, three years, is too much for me. Go along with the one year for the provisions you mentioned. Thank you.
Peter?
I guess the question in my mind right now is that you guys kind of, I mean, we've put in the contract that you guys need to hire a bookkeeper. Does the MYA intend to do that?
That would be a board decision. We have briefly discussed it, but we haven't, it hasn't been at the top of our agenda with everything else going on. We had, do you know what's going on at the MYA, all the issues that we've had?
To be honest with you, I don't, sir, but it should be at the top of your agenda, or else we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. And that's why I expressed my disgust the way that I did, because it should be at the top of the agenda. And the fact that you said that it's not at the top of the agenda kind of gives me the feeling that this is an exercise we shouldn't be going through.
We had not had time to discuss it.
I'm sorry, sir?
This past month, this past meeting, we did not have time to discuss it. Because of other issues that went on. But we have discussed hiring, I mean, we had a financial controller before Holly came on. We hired somebody. It wasn't working because of the, just the communication and trying to get the paperwork back to this person that was hired. You know, and this person got frustrated because she wasn't getting the support that she needed. Okay, so she ended up leaving, okay? And Holly came on and tried to get a hold of it, and it's the same issue. It's trying to get the treasurers and the other people that are writing the checks and everything, getting the information back to Holly that she can put all this stuff in paperwork, in the bookkeeping and all the financials, okay? Because, again, I can sit here and tell you all day long that it's volunteers, and we're doing the best we can, okay? I mean, this past week I've spent fifteen hours MYA alone, okay? And all these programs, all these volunteers are going out there and they're killing themselves trying to get fundraising, doing the best they can to get signs down at the field. They're out there in front of shaws, standing there all day Saturday long, trying to make this program better, okay? Because seventy-two thousand dollars, it's not a ton of money, but yes, it does help a lot, especially with the smaller programs, like wrestling and cheerleading and the small programs. The large programs, they're in good shape, you know, they have a lot of registrations, you know what I mean? But not, to not give us the funding will probably demolish wrestling. Softball's going to have a hard time, you know, putting a program together.
I know football is struggling right now, too.
The whole basis of the MYA is making it affordable for all these kids. And if we're going to be making registrations, basketball alone, these kids pay for six months alone, they pay thirty-five dollars. Okay, that's great, that's what the MYA is for. And if we have to raise that to two-hundred dollars, we're going to have less participants. You know what I mean, we don't want to see any kid not be able to play. And for us to go back every month at our meetings in this week, if you're sat in our meeting, you would know, we sit there to all the directors, we need backup, we need this, and Holly's, I mean, she...
The meeting is all about me.
Takes up half the meeting, talking about what we don't have, what we need to complete this audit, excuse me, audit. And yeah, it's frustrating, and I take it, I'm passionate about this. I mean, I'm not here because, I don't even, didn't even want to be president, okay?
No, you really don't want to be president.
I don't want to be president. I can thank Tom Thornton for this, okay? But I'm doing it because I feel that no one else will, no one else will step up and do this, okay? And Holly has been putting the past three years into this, trying to get this work done, this audit. And for you guys not to give us the funding will probably eliminate two programs.
Mr. Chairman? Barbara, his name, sorry.
Another thing to think about, in addition to your bookkeeper, everybody used the same software.
So can I just say that, so I've been on the board probably, how long, four? Maybe three and a half, four years. And I, we went from Excel spreadsheets, piece of paper, to QuickBooks.
Yeah.
And that took a lot. And I switched us from, some programs had two bank accounts, to everyone having one bank account. So I feel like I put a lot of time in, but I also feel like I failed because the audit didn't go as well as it should have. And I feel like it's because I didn't focus on what was important.
Well, you see, I look a little differently at it. I look at it from the viewpoint of, you've helped them get this far. And they probably wouldn't have gotten this far without you having done all of that. Because there would have been more glaring opportunities for a lack of information. So I think, you know, your efforts have really, you know, helped them survive this long as an organization. So you shouldn't feel bad about that. It's just moving forward in the future, it's a new day and new opportunities. And what can, you know, what can be done to make it easier for everybody? And when those auditors walk in the door to do it, having one system or one methodology for all of the teams instead of the auditors trying to figure out six or seven or eight different methodologies will make it a lot easier as well.
Yeah. I did talk to them, so because our audit came in late, of course, the year has passed, and we can't do anything about correcting what's happened before today, let's say. When I talked to Derek, he had mentioned that maybe they come in and just reconcile last year for us and maybe help us put those procedures and processes in place for next year. Because to audit, to not audit, just to reconcile those programs takes a lot. And I, because I'm in accounting right now, it's month end, so I just, I work a ton of hours and my kids and all that. And I'm not making excuses, but I'm just saying that there's a lot of time that needs to be put into this. And so I asked Derek if he would be willing to just reconcile last year and help me put the processes in place that needs to be in place for the revenue. Because he can't do that as an auditor. When I talked to him, he said, if I provide you with the service of how to do it, then I'm not auditing. But he agrees that although he can't on paper say that he can a hundred percent say that the revenue is the revenue, he doesn't believe that there's anything going on with it. So I get both sides of it. But I have to teach everybody how to do the right, you know, I have to sit with every program and, you know, figure out how they're doing their registration and make sure that it's being done right. And I unfortunately focused on the wrong stuff, but that stuff is better.
I think you're owning more than you should. Should you own some of it? Yes, some of it, yes, in terms of communicating what your needs are and all that. But what is it that's going to change the attitude of the people who are writing the checks and who are doing the registrations? They've known, maybe they don't. Maybe the people who are actually doing it or not doing it haven't been communicated with regarding the severity of the problem. Maybe they've been protected too much, I don't know the answer. But the point is that we have no authority to tell you to do something. We can, we recommend it for five years.
Yep, and I do have the policies and the procedures in place, I wrote them myself.
So if they don't follow them, what happens? Nothing.
Well, we had, we used to have a fine in place, we fined the programs. But, you know, we did away with that because who are we really hurting? We're hurting the kids, we're not hurting anyone else.
You're hurting the kids regardless.
I agree with you.
Wow, and that's a great line. Eileen, I'll get to you, Peter.
The only thing I just want to say is, if the MYA does not get their allotment, it has not a thing to do with the town council, it doesn't have a thing to do with them. What, if they make the decision to not give you the money, it's not because they haven't given you a chance or have seen the willingness to take this seriously. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that while we're, you know, passing around blame, it's not, the council has done everything that they can for five years to try and get your attention, and we can't get your attention, so that's...
You've gotten my attention, so I'm sorry.
I think that's a false statement.
I feel like that's a slap in the face to me, because I've worked hard for four years to try and get this program in order, and so you have my attention.
We have done everything that you guys have suggested. Paul suggested changing audit firms, we did that, it was someone he recommended, we did that. We got all the paperwork, or we tried to get all the paperwork, and that's where our downfall is. We're not getting all the information to these, the audit team, okay? And I get it, they don't want to put their name to it. But I guess we can sit here and we can talk about what we've done wrong or awful for the past five years. But you tell us, tell us what we need to do to fix this.
What could we have done that would have made it different?
What's that?
What could we have said or done that would have resulted in something different? Because that will guide us to about what we do now. If we just continue to do the same thing, same thing's going to happen. I'm sorry, Pete.
That's okay. You know, and I'm listening to you guys, and I'm starting, I'm wondering, is it time now for the MYA to, some of the bigger sports, maybe it's time for them to go off on their own and be their own organization. And maybe the MYA board now shepherds those smaller, smaller sports that need the help and need the organization. You know, maybe it's time for some of these big programs, because I'm hearing there's a lack of communication at times between the directors of each of these programs and yourselves. So if some of these organizations are big enough, maybe you've reached the time for that.
And in our meetings, that has been brought up, and the fear of that is those organizations, they won't have fields. Because we're part of the MYA, part of the town, we have the fields for these kids to play on. If these soccer goes off on their own, now we don't have the town support for the kids to play on these fields. And that's why they don't do it, because for them to go to GPS in Bedford or in Nashua or wherever it is, now it's a huge cost to rent these fields, now your programs are going, your registration is going to skyrocket. And trust me, lacrosse, soccer, football, they've all want to do this, and we told them to do it. Go ahead and do it if you want to do it, but we can't guarantee that you'll have the fields.
Because we have such town support with the fields and the indoor space and all of that that you guys support us with.
But I would disagree with that, and I apologize, I would disagree with that because all it is is a different organization come to the town council saying, we need fields to play on. And then it's, that would be up to us to figure out how to make it work. So to say that, if they were to pick up and leave that they wouldn't have access to fields, I would suggest that would not be true.
But I thought because of the, because they were town-associated sports that we got first kind of dibs on fields and space before we let outside people come in and use our fields, we would give it to...
I'm talking about Merrimack organizations only, if so, let's just say Merrimack baseball decides to go off and do their own thing. Whoever their leadership team is, I would anticipate that they would come to the board saying, can we enter an agreement to use Vice Field or Twedowsky Field or the fields the kids go? That's really what I would anticipate. I wouldn't want them to go to Bedford or Milford or anywhere else. I would expect them, that if they went off on their own, that they would engage into a relationship with us and with the town to negotiate their own deal as it relates to fields.
The whole reason for the MYA is to keep this affordable for the kids. And if you do that and they become a private organization, those costs go from two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a season to three thousand dollars. GPS charges three thousand dollars in Bedford.
Yeah, the town council's not going to argue with you about that, that's definitely a valid statement. And I guess Peter made a good suggestion that if the big organizations need to branch off because they want their autonomy, that's one thing they can do, and as Bill suggested, they could make their own arrangements. I would suggest, because I've heard it a couple of times over the past years, is that your executive board needs to be a lot stronger organization and have better reins and controls on these organizations. And I know they don't want to hear that, they want to be independent organizations and do their own thing. But they're part of an organization that's pushing five-hundred thousand dollars through the account, and they need to step up and be responsible. And the executive board, I think, needs to be able to put their foot down and say, this is how it's going to be. You do it this way, or we have to shut it down. At least from their perspective of the MYA, you have to have some authority to demand responsibility. And if you don't have that authority, and you're not going to get that authority, you're not going to be able to continue to present yourself as the umbrella organization that solves all the MYA or all the youth activities problems in the town. As much as we all very much appreciate the youth activities and the programs and everything that are done, and I'll add my voice to the others, it's great, my kids enjoyed it when they were that age. The fact that the program is there and has been there for as long as it has, it's looked on all over the place as a model for other folks and stuff like that, I think it's wonderful. It's the problem of getting the different organizations to work together as a cohesive unit to be the MYA, to be responsible.
I guess this would be a question for Paul, what do we need to see from the MYA in the next three, six months for you guys to feel that we have done our job? What needs to happen?
Right now, we're anticipating that you would start closing your books for this year, and theoretically, you'd be presenting an audit in, come October, saying that this is where we got to, this is what we did. I have a hard time believing you're going to be able to even do that. Any organization normally would have to have their audit done by September or maybe even the end of August. But we granted you guys the extra month in our contract because we knew that you guys were all busy with back to school and things like that, to try and give you a better chance to get it done, and you've never in the four or five years made it. And most years, you're a half a year behind, this year, you're a full year behind the close of your books. And so I'm not really sure what we can say at this meeting. I mean, maybe you can have a discussion with Paul and Eileen on the side to figure out where things can go. But even if we move forward with a one-year contract, we have a hard time figuring out, when can we say we've crossed the line, we've dealt, you know, with things to understand where things are. I mean, I guess if you get all your programs in line, you get your registrations and your bookings and everything laid out so that people can easily sit and look at them and understand it, but the people that have CPA backgrounds, not you or me, okay? I would be lost, I'm lost in the pages that he gave me today. But we need to go forward to try and show that we can be responsible for the money that we bring in, the money that we spend, we know where it's coming from. I know you guys do a lot of fundraising.
Okay, so my question is, how do we go forward? How do I do that, Paul? What do I need to do? What does the executive board need to do to go forward?
Hire a bookkeeper.
I mean, the idea that's been put forward...
But where are we getting the money to hire a bookkeeper? If we're not getting money from the town, then where are we getting the money to hire a bookkeeper?
If we hire a bookkeeper, do we still have to pay for the audit?
You just basically threw away a hundred thousand dollars on audits in the last five years for no reason.
I agree with you.
Not a hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, it's six, it's about twelve thousand dollars a year.
No, it's, it's eight.
Sixty thousand dollars, yes.
Eight.
This past year was eight, and last year was twelve.
I'm sorry, Peter, you wanted to say something?
I guess I think we've said what... I guess I, I, I think we've said what we need to say at this point. And I, I think the only question left for the council is a one- or a three-year contract. I think we're kicking around. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody here. And again, this is not an easy thing. It breaks my heart in many ways to even have to approach this issue. And, you know, and I appreciate you both being here today to sit down and talk with us. I'm hoping that your fellow members and the directors of each of the sports listen to this meeting and watch it to kind of get an idea of where we're at, our heads are at. This is the last thing we want to do is, you know, we talked about it, every member of this council, myself included. I mean, we, we don't want to abandon the program, but I think there's things that are, it's like the auditors have said, there's red flags. And I think, as the town manager said, we have to, we have to look out for those. So, you know, I guess the question now for the council is, do we move forward on a year or a three-year contract?
Go ahead, Eileen.
I just, the first thing that we really need to know is our fiscal year is ending in a few days. We have $42,000 sitting here for last year. Are you going to give that money to them, or are we going to, are they going to forfeit it? And then you can talk about the future years and contracts and all that kind of thing. So there's more than one...
Eileen stole my thunder because that was gonna be my question. What about the $42,914? So I guess the, I guess, would we need a formal motion to deal with that particular issue? Okay, then I would, I would move that the town council advise the MYA that the $42,914 that's currently owed to them is forfeited due to breach of contract.
Can I speak to this again? I'm sorry, what did you say an audit would cost, to finish this audit, to get it done successfully?
I think at this point, it's not an audit. I think that it should be a reconciliation of the revenue that we claim that we have.
And what would it cost?
I didn't go to him. We talked about it, and he said that he could do it. I don't know what the cost would be.
But it would be more than, it would be more than reconciliation, right, Paul? I'm sorry, revenue. They, I'm gonna second it for a discussion.
So you seconded Bill's motion?
I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Okay. Paul?
They will still not give you an opinion. They walked away from the audit engagement. They listed a bunch of things that needed to be worked on. They would be more than happy to come in to a bookkeeping service agreement to help out with, with potentially reconciling and showing the MYA how to reconcile their registrations and sit down and actually do that for them. I do not have an idea of what a, it would probably be a fee-for-service contract. It wouldn't be a fixed contract because who knows how many hours? That would get them started with mostly, basically 50% of their revenue comes in through registrations. But there's other revenue too, donations, fundraising, that they would have to help set up proper procedures.
We have procedures for our fundraising. What are you talking about?
They're set up, but to reconcile, to make sure they can reconcile. When you bring in a, an audit firm to, to do reconciliation work with your balance sheet, they, it's more than just making sure, they'll make sure that it's done properly and that they can account for it in the right way. So, I don't know how long that would take. Remember, now they gotta go back two years to make sure the number they started with is good. So, can it be done? Yes. I just don't know how much it would cost. Would it be in the same avenue as what an audit is, potentially?
If we're talking two years, maybe.
Maybe even more.
Okay, do you want to talk to the motion?
Well, I, I feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place. I, I, do I want to? No, I don't. I, I am annoyed that I have to do this because I don't want to do this. But I feel like I'm in your position. You have these people who, God bless them, are putting in hours and all those wonderful things for the kids in this town. But they're not doing what they need to do financially. And nothing you're doing is making them do it. And you know what? That's exactly what's happening to us. We want to be able to do all we can, but no matter what we did, has worked. So the option is, do we just back off and say, "Okay, you either get your act together," not you, all the directors, "Look what they're, and they're gonna hate us." If I was them, I might hate us too. But the point is, we're putting you in the position you should be putting them in. Because it's not your fault. They're putting you in that position of having to defend those things. That's what I feel like. I'm in a position of having you having to defend yourself. None of this should be necessary. And by, by doing it, by not doing it, we're giving, we're, we're not doing what you need to do, is pay the price. These are the consequences.
Is there, I'm sorry, Nancy.
That's all right. No, I'm done.
Is there, do you guys have a separate finance committee?
No.
You know, and you know, and I won't go too far in this, but maybe with all those folks that are part of this organization, put out the call and say, "We need financial help." I have a feeling that there are other folks there to help you too that have some, probably some incredible backgrounds that might offer to help you, you know, what you, I think you need a finance committee. And, and use some of these fertile, fertile minds that are all part of it. If you can get them in there, put out the call to the entire organization. But I agree with Nancy. I feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place, and I, it's not a good feeling.
I guess I agree, but now we're talking more people that we have to manage and...
Well, this is a big issue.
Right. No, no, I, I told, I'm not saying that it's not late, but I'm just saying it's more people that you have to manage. And we're already trying to manage the people that we have. So I just, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is. I know that we've come a long way, even though it doesn't look like we have. I feel like in the four years. Do you agree, Brian?
I know we put a, effort, good effort into it, yeah.
You know.
Well, I'm sure you put a lot of effort into it, but over five years now, it seems like this is the very first year.
But things have changed. It may be the... The same management letter may be going out, but we have changed things. Before I started, there was no procedures. There were no manuals. There were no policies. There were no guidance. I answer emails within five, 10 minutes. I know when I was treasurer of soccer program, I got nowhere. So I swore that I would be there to help all of the programs. So although I, I totally understand where you guys are sitting, but I also feel like the program is so much better now, and I don't understand why the auditing firms aren't saying that. We have procedures that most of the programs are following. Maybe some of them aren't, but most of them are following. And when we have the turnover, which is what it really boils down to, is when you have the turnover, you have that lag in communication between treasurers. I have the handbook that I send out to people. I sit a couple hours with each program treasurer. But if they don't think there's problems, then they don't know to come to me. And I can't sit on their board. If they don't need me, I don't, I don't come. So I, I understand both sides, but I don't know how to meet in the middle. And I, and I could get there because I don't mind being the person that no one likes. Because I don't care if no one likes me, as long as the kids get to play soccer or whatever. I don't even have a kid that's in the sport long enough to say that they enjoy all of it. But I'm definitely into, I'm an athlete myself. And I, I just, the programs are so important to the kids, the team, the everything. And I just want to make it work.
So do, so do we. Back to the motion that Bill made. Could you reword it or rephrase it for me, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. The motion was that the town council... What was the word I used?
Withhold or call forfeit?
Relinquish, they relinquish.
Yeah, the relinquish, thank you.
Forfeit, that's it.
The forfeit, that's the, that the, that the town council, I'll be back to that. I make a motion that the town council withdraw the $42,914 that's currently owed by the town of Merrimack to the Merrimack Youth Association for breach of contract.
And that was seconded by Nancy for discussion. Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss?
I want to echo Council Albert's comment, which is, I agree with absolutely everything that Council Harrington had to say. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk to the motion? I, so I, I'm, I'm hearing you say that it's gonna make it very difficult for the organizations, and I, I understand that. And, and what I don't understand is why after five years, they don't seem to understand the responsibility that they have and the, and the difficulty of the bad position they put the executive board in, they put the town council in, by not stepping up and figuring out how to be more communicative and more accurate in this. I, I don't know of any way to try and salvage this at this point. Because we're sitting here two days or three days from the end of the fiscal year, the, the money disappears then. And there's no way you're gonna get us an audit by then. And the contract very clearly states that we need an audit to do that. So I don't know how else to help this situation at this point. There's no other comments? We'll call for a vote on the motion to...
If I could just ask you another question. So, all right, so the $42,000, you guys are proposing to forfeit that. Where does that leave us for the next year?
That's the next question we'll try to answer.
Another question is, and I've asked it twice already, what can we do? And all I have is hire a bookkeeper. That's all I need to do?
Respectfully, Council Albert had a great idea regarding a finance committee. Eileen and Paul have also given suggestions as it relates to the audits that have been done. So to say what you need to do, I, to me, I've sat here and I've listened to a couple of different ideas, and that's really where I would hope your organization would begin to move forward on, is looking at what was done in the past, going out, seeing if there's anything available in terms of somebody coming in to help you develop a finance committee, or finding people that work as either an accountant or CPA, or they work in finance, they work for a local bank or something like that. Matter of fact, I'm trying to think of the retirees. What is it, SCORE? There's a, there's a program called SCORE. They're, they're a bunch of retired executives. And their sole responsibility is to go in and help 501(c)(3)'s and not-for-profits and small startups, and helping them, you know, begin to lay the groundwork to get an organization going. I would want to believe that you could find some retiree that would love to get out his calculator and his, and his legal pad and a pencil and go, and help you guys go to work and figure that out. Because there are resources out there that, that don't have to break the bank, that you can find somebody that's willing to volunteer and help, help you get on solid financial footing. And Eileen was raising her hand.
I just want to make sure that you understand that we're not talking about having somebody understand accounting jargon. All we're asking is for the money to be properly accounted for. It came in here, it went there. It came in here, it went there. That's all we're asking for. We're not asking for capital assets or... So to make, don't, let's make it sound like it's some major undertaking. It's just account for the money. That's it.
But Eileen, we need to see our return on investment. I thought that was a...
What do you mean by that?
Return on investment. In other words, we're investing $72,000 into the MYA. I think we need to see a positive return on what we're investing into the organization. That's what I meant by it.
Nancy?
The only other comment before we vote is, maybe this is the impetus you, bad cop, good cop, with a bad cop. This is the impetus you may need to say to all the directors, "Okay, we want to get this support back. We have to do this." And maybe that'll be the impetus that will help you.
I want to give you the support pack.
I do too.
I do too. Okay, so...
Okay, let's do the vote.
So I have to call the question on...
We'll try to answer your question.
Call the question on the motion to, to forfeit the $42,914 for breach of contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unfortunately.
Opposed? Abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. And I, I don't think anybody does that happily. I mean, it, it's just an unfortunate situation that, that the requirement for responsibility brings us to. Now, from, from here, we need to understand where we go with a, with an ongoing contract. And you might have some suggestions or requests as far as an ongoing contract. We have some three-year contracts that were presented to us to consider. I don't know how much you had a chance to review them, or if you've had a chance to review them.
No, I don't have a contract.
Okay. I mean, they're basically the same contracts with some wording in them that either do or don't include hiring a bookkeeper or some company or organization that can help you to get an accounting of what's going on. The, the current contract, if it were to be extended, would include funds from the town. With the requirement for audits and things of that nature, the other contract without those funds is not requiring an audit, but it is recommending or suggesting that you hire a bookkeeping firm or something to try and find a better way to get a handle on your, your income and your expenses. And it's not just registrations. It's all of your funding, your fundraisers and all those kind of things. That's all part of your organization and your expenses.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council enter into an agreement with the Merrimack Youth Association for a period of two years. Two years. That says that we will continue our responsibilities with the fields. We will have oversight on advertising. And that the MYA, at their expense, hires a bookkeeper to perform an accounting function. No audit, no subsidy.
And how long?
Two years. And I can give you my rationale if I have a friendly second.
I'll have a friendly, I'll give you the friendly second.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul and the MYA indicated that for them to try and get things into order, that it might be two years. And while I agree with, I understand where Council Albert and Council Woods are coming from regarding the one year in there, lack of wanting to go long-term with three-year, I felt that based on the dialogue that occurred between Paul and the MYA regarding two years could potentially be a suitable compromise for the council to consider in terms of what is an appropriate agreement to enter into the MYA. So that's why I made the motion that I did.
Quick question. If it were to be two years, Tom, you had mentioned earlier that, let's say, in the next year, within the next year, we receive information that reflects great advancement in terms of reaching the goal, having books. We could always modify that second year.
We could, we could add language that reverts, I would, I apologize, Tom, go ahead.
That wording is currently in the contracts in both cases that we have, and I was assuming that you were gonna take these contracts and just reduce them to two years rather than writing a brand-new contract.
Well, I've looked at it. I think the contract B that was presented to us does not include the audit or, or the subsidy.
Right, it does not include that.
Right, so I don't think I'm rewriting anything. I was just merely stating the terms.
Right, so if you're not rewriting it, then the terms are already there that state that we can adjust this contract by mutual agreement.
I'm still in favor of a year. I think that you can move pretty quickly. I hate to say that we've already written that we're not gonna fund for two years. I'd like to say, "Okay, it's a year." Get your bookkeeper, and as Eileen said, well, it's not overcomplicated. I like what she said there. Just account for where the money's going, coming... Just account for where the money's going, coming, you know, coming and going from, and that's really what we're looking for. So to me, I'd like to, I stand by my recommendation of a year, because I don't want to be sitting here. I don't have a problem revisiting this issue in a year. And if there's no improvement made, then maybe it goes out to a three-year contract at that point.
I agree with Pete. Okay, well, I can't disagree with Peter. I don't understand the ramification of the two-year, honestly, and maybe I'm not able to listen carefully enough.
Well, Paul indicated that for them to be able to do the audit and be able to go back and revisit things, that the process would be two years, if two years. It could be more, but two years was the number.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I think he misunderstood him. I thought, I think he meant that there are two years worth of records to look at. I don't think it will take two years.
Not going forward two years.
So...
Is that what you meant?
Wow, I'm sitting here, I guess I knew Q-tips.
Can we ask him what he meant?
I could tell you what I meant. They are basically two years behind in reconciliations, so that's going to take some time. But not two years to get caught up. If they hire somebody, like the gentleman that they suggested, it shouldn't take them two years to get caught up. It'll be within the year.
As long as we can pay.
Within the year, yes.
I'll amend it to a year, Mr. Chairman, if my second agrees to the...
I will agree to that.
Thank you.
Exactly for what you're saying, Pete.
So basically, as I hear it, we're talking about taking what was offered as contract B and moving forward with that, but with a one-year program. Is that accurate?
Yes.
This is A.
B is just the clean copy.
It just shows it without all the, yeah.
A just shows you what the language said currently and striking out what they're taking out of the contract.
Would be B with the strike.
Would be B, clean copy, would be B.
Does anybody else have any comments on the motion of a one-year contract going from twenty-ninth July of 2019 to June thirtieth of 2021, 2020? I think there's a lot of advantages to that. It gives you the time to spend the year to catch up with the books for the last two years and figure out if, in fact, you can put practices in place, whether that's a requirement that the executive board get a little stiffer with the different organizations and get them under an umbrella, or whether that's, however, you can do that. We need to get everybody on the same page moving forward, I think, in order to be able to see it as an organization. Otherwise, it's just a compilation of five different organizations, and it's very difficult to organize or audit or understand what's going on. We all agree that you're doing a great job, with the kids, with the opportunities that you're providing and the support you're giving to the town. Last thing we want to do is shut it down. But we also need to understand that we can make progress and go forward with this. I know Dave Yakuboff was adamant about this. And that's just, that's where a lot of this started.
So the budgets that go into effect July first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020, that were approved, I think. So with this contract, no funding, does that mean that that funding is no longer?
Correct.
Right.
I just, I need to go back to the programs and let them know that they need to.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Barbara?
So the money for the new fiscal year is in the budget. What if they come back in six months and say, here it is?
You know, my personal opinion, if somebody came back to me in six months and could lay out and cleanly explain what's going on, I'd be more than willing to open up this contract and reevaluate based on the line in there that lets us do so.
That's what I'm talking about.
I have no problem with that.
Because the money will still be there.
It's not going anywhere.
Which is one of the carrots.
Well, that's why I wanted it said out loud, so that, because I think there was an understanding or a thought process that there was no money. But the money, from our perspective, is still in the budget, and therefore, if you guys can come back before a year, and all your ducks are in order, and all of your income is accounted for, going back two years, is that what you're saying? And how many years do they have to go back? They may not be able to go back all five.
See, that would be the discussion. Personally, I think that's the discussion.
Over there.
Between these two, to be able to help communicate what is it that we need to see, because we're going to rely on them.
Yeah, right, exactly. And you have got to, for those programs that don't want to play the accounting game, you got to beat them into it.
Item seventeen on the contract we're discussing says, notwithstanding any of the provisions hereof, the parties here and after may mutually agree to written modifications of this agreement. So if we need to come and revisit this in three months or six months, there's nothing saying that we can't do that.
Okay.
Okay?
I would love to see the rest of the board and maybe the directors come in and assist you guys.
Right?
That's right.
I guess we take it upon ourselves to be...
Believe me, I appreciate all the good work that everybody does in that organization.
But we've never, I guess we've never really thought about telling them that, you know...
No, we invited them.
Oh, we did? Okay, sorry. I guess we...
Maybe a little more forcefully. Eileen?
I just would like to offer Paul's assistance not to do your books, or not to reconstruct your books, or any of those kinds of things. But he could talk to you about, look, you need to get all the same software, you know, for this. In order to do this, you need to do this. And it can only be advisory, because he's a CPA, and if he's advising you and you're not following it, it falls back on him.
Well, every program has their own league that they need to adhere to, so that's where those registrations are. You can't have one registration software for all the programs. Each one has their own registration. Soccer has their own, football has their own, each one has their organizations that they have to register through. So there's no way that that's ever going to be one system.
Well, then, I don't see how, you know, I mean, it's...
Right. But I'm just saying that they're each, it's not just one soccer program. They're all individual, and they answer to the organization that they answer to, and they're, like Gott Soccer, they answer to NHSL, and football answers to a different organization. So that, those registrations are never going to be one body.
At the same time, though, that can be part of the decision.
No.
You know, this is what we need to do, soccer people. Now, how are we going to be able to get the data together somehow? Let's work out how we do it, be able to reflect this information.
Right.
Have the ownership on them. That's right.
No, no, I understand, but I want to make sure that I understand what you guys are looking for, and I know that that's never going to be, I'll never be able to get that to one system.
I was just giving an example, and I'm just...
No, 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 I'm sorry.
All I'm saying is that I want to be clear that this is not going to be Paul's new job. So all I'm just going to say, and no, I mean, I just, I...
We're not asking Paul to do it.
I know you're not. I'm just saying that I'm not...
I'm all taken that question.
No, I'm just saying that I'm not offering, I just wanted to be clear that I wasn't offering on his behalf.
No, and I know, yes.
So, but he will work with you to try and get what it is that we're looking for, so that you don't go trying to chase after something that you don't know what it is. So it's not going to be a big mystery to you. We will, we will guide you.
Right.
Okay. We're not going to just...
No, I, yeah, I mean, I know what needs to be done. It's getting people to do what you're asking, but if I don't know, then I can't help or fix.
But they have to be part of the problem solving.
Absolutely.
Paul? Yes, I'll do whatever they need. I do want to mention in the contract, I took the pictures on Friday morning, and I drove by the other day, and I saw that there was one additional sign on the batting cages that I didn't get a picture of. It's one that's been approved, it's convenient MD. It just is not in the back of the contract. I just want everybody to make, be aware that that needs to be added to the contract.
Okay. Lon?
Is it appropriate to move the question?
Sure.
So moved.
Yes, it is. Okay. Questions called on, which question, I thought we voted on that already. Which question are you...
The contract.
The contract.
One year.
Sorry. Going round and round in circles.
I know. I feel the same way.
So the motion to approve the contract B with a one-year term, as presented with the addition of additional pictures of signage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? That passes six zero zero. So Brian, through all this, have you gotten a better feel for where you need to go? Or, I'm not sure the town council at this meeting can give you more information than we have at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I do in a sense, but am I going to get there? I don't know. I mean, like I said, we're not, the executive board is here to support and help and be liaison between the town and the school, and for me to go back to the volunteers and start beating them and saying they're not volunteering enough, they have to do more, is going to be difficult. And I think that's why we have the turnover rate that we do. You know what I mean? You might have seen me for the past five years, but the boards are changing every six months. You know, and the treasurers, they have a lifespan of one year. You know what I mean?
I'm sure that complicates trying to get any books together, but that's also part of the problem with an organization this size. And either it requires growth and restructuring, or something has to change, because you're not dealing with fifty thousand dollars anymore, you're dealing with five hundred thousand dollars. And we're not dealing with just registrations, we're dealing with fundraising, and we're dealing with a lot of other activities and money in and out and things of that nature. And so I'm sure there's a lot going on there. It's not a simple task. Eileen?
It is not a difficult task. If Paul could meet with each one of the treasurers and talk to them about how to, when you get money, put it in the bank and write down who it was from...
I have, so I don't know that me or Paul is going to make the difference, but...
Okay.
I feel like you don't think I know what...
No.
I have met with these treasurers for ice...
No, 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 no. Again, Holly, it has absolutely nothing to do with you at all. It really, really doesn't. It's just, as Nancy said, how do we get them to understand that their lack of simple recording of things is going to hurt the kids, because the money's not going to come to them?
Right.
It's a very simple thing. So it can only be from obstinance, it's that, because it's that simple. And it isn't you, Holly.
Yeah, are we good?
Yeah. As good as we're going to get.
As good as we're going to get tonight.
Right.
The only carrot we can offer is that if we can get this cleaned up, to where people can feel like there is a clear path between registrations and deposits and things of that nature, that we can rediscuss this in six months, or whatever time.
Whenever, yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming in, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay. We did three already. We did one, two, and three already.
And we move forward on the donations without the police officers here?
I suspect so, Eileen.
There's a situation going on right now. You're aware.
Yeah, I got that information, and I certainly don't have a problem if, I don't know if, we can do it without somebody sitting there, or does...
Unless you have questions that need to be answered.
The only thing I'll say is, from my, if I can speak to this subject, is I've looked at the equipment the police department is asking for, I'm familiar with, and I initiated our tactical team, and the chief is right on, as well as Captain Towleton, that there is a need. Communications in tactical situations are vital. It's time for them to have that upgrade, and so I strongly recommend and think this is a great idea. And I would like to thank Merrimack Crime Line, Merrimack Rotary, the Merrimack Lions Club, and the Merrimack Lioness Club for making these generous donations, and that's my two cents.
So do you want to make some motions?
Point of order, these haven't been introduced yet.
We want to introduce them one at a time, if we can. And so, I mean, if you were, Paul can act as the middleman in presenting these. I don't think it'll be a problem, but just to say that you're representing the town or the police department. Our first item on the agenda is, the town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from the Merrimack Crime Line for the Merrimack Police Department Special Response Team to be used towards the purchase of upgraded communication equipment with ballistic helmets pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article eight dash fifteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by Peter and Bill. Does anybody want to talk to it? Peter, you've already alluded to it. Do you want to just ditto your comments, or...
No, I think, again, I think we're talking about here is communications for a special response team, which we've had for several years now, and this is vital for them to do their job in critical situations. So again, I support it.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions or comments on item four, the donation of five thousand dollars from the Merrimack Crime Line? Saying done, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six zero zero. Next item is a donation from the Merrimack Rotary in the amount of five thousand dollars for the same general program.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Lon, seconded by Bill. Do we need to talk to that?
Same comments with Peter Albert on the previous action. Thanks, and...
Thanks very much to the Rotary for their donation.
...the redmi specs, and it's well needed, and I'd like to have it.
Awesome, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? That passes six zero zero. The next item is an acceptance of a donation for the Merrimack Police Department from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Police Department Special Response Team for two thousand five hundred dollars to be used towards the purchase of upgraded equipment, including ballistic helmets per RSA 3195B and Charter Article eight fifteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Barbara. Anybody want to speak to this one? With great thanks to the Merrimack Lions Club for their donation, it's very much appreciated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes six zero zero. And finally, the acceptance of a donation for the Merrimack Police Department in the amount of a hundred dollars from the Merrimack Lioness Club to the Department's Special Response Team.
So moved.
For RSA 3195B and our Charter Article eight fifteen, moved by Lon and seconded by Nancy. Anybody want to speak to this one?
One comment, Mr. Chairman. One comment, Mr. Chairman. I, I can appreciate when departments go out and are able to find grants and donations and charitable donations. One, I, I commend these organizations. And two, I commend the, the police department for finding this and not having to come to the taxpayers for this money. So that, that should be recognized as well. That's it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that. It, it is an extremely valuable effort that these organizations are in town and do contribute as much as they do to the town of Merrimack. And we are very appreciative of that. Even a dollar helps and we wouldn't want to argue with anybody. If there's no other comments, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? 6-0-0.
Paul? We gave a, you know, the new plaques for the Crime Line already. We haven't given one to the Rotary, but they have done a lot for the town. And we haven't given one to the Lions Club or the Lioness Club yet. Just want to.
And they have a history.
The Lions Club does have, both of them have a history of, of helping out where they can.
Contributing to the town and helping out. Do we need a motion for that? Or just a policy? It's, it's not an agenda item, but it would probably be a great idea to have a motion to have, have the managers follow up on it and bring it to a, a future meeting.
So moved?
So, motion by Bill and seconded by Nancy to propose plaques for these organizations. These three or? Just these three have not received. Yeah, have not received anything yet. The Rotary Club, the Lions Club and the Lionesses Club. Is there any other comments? Barbara left the room. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? It's 5-0-0 with Barbara temporarily out of the room. One other thing I want to bring up before we get out of this is the, at the last meeting, you'll notice in our minutes, we've tabled the contract for the Adult Community Center to this meeting and it was overlooked unfortunately by myself and Bill when we talked about the agenda. And Eileen? And so we would like to have a motion to take it off the table and put it back on the table for next meeting.
So, seconded.
So moved by Nancy and seconded by Bill to take the Adult Community Center contract off the table and put it back on the table to the next meeting. And we'll be sure to bring it up there.
July 18th.
July 18th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? It's 5-0-0 and Nancy, Barbara's still out of the room. Moving right along. That brings us to the minutes of June 13th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, June 13th, 2019 with the following modifications.
Second.
On page four, line 20, can we identif- please identify Representative Rung as Representative Rosemarie Rung? Just for that line only. And on page five, line three, identifying Senator Chandler as Senator Shannon Chandler, just for that line only. Otherwise, that's all I had. I want us Council of Healy to see to correct me?
We're looking at minutes, Barbara, if you have anything you wanted to add.
No, I, that was the only one I had as well.
I had a simple question, trying to look for clarification. On page two and lines seven and eight, Mr. McCabe was talking to us and he said, "In January, a mass mailing was distributed to past and present vendors as well as new farmers found in, and then New Hampshire-made is in capitals," and it says, "or produced information listings." And I'm not sure if that's what he said or, or if he meant something slightly different than that.
So the state, to my knowledge, through the Department of, used to be known as, it's, it used to be DREAD, now it's Department of Economic Development. As a part of the New Hampshire-made program that they have, they actually have a brochure that identifies companies in New Hampshire that specifically focus on New Hampshire-made products. It could be arts, crafts, could be different types of syrup, you know, maple, birch. Some of those, you know, craft beers, that kind of thing. So that's, that's where I think he was.
I understand where New Hampshire-made comes from. I, I guess I was looking at the "or produced information listings" and I was thinking originally when I saw it, that maybe it was "or product information listings," but maybe we can just leave it that way. Look at it or something to see if you can get a better handle on what, what that, what he was indicating. Just not a big deal. Without any further corrections, it was on page 10 of these minutes, line 33, that the motion was made to table the item that we just handled. We decided, Barbara in your presence, to untable and retable the, the Adult Community Center contract to, to our next meeting. So those are the minutes. Call for approval, a, a motion has been made to approve by Bill, seconded by Lon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved with corrections.
Corrections, yep.
Any opposed? And Nancy's abstaining. So that passes 5-0-1 with Nancy abstaining. Comments from the press or the public? Or the council? Anybody have any? Barbara?
At our last meeting, and if you note in the minutes, the representatives were talking about HB 737 passing. And that would be to analyze and investigate environmental and public health impacts relating to the release of PFAS in the air and the groundwater. And that there was a committee and that they would need a representative from Merrimack appointed by the town council. I just didn't want that to get lost on our radar. Or make sure it was on our radar.
Okay.
Okay. And also there was supposed to be a member from an advocacy group as well. So those are.
Is actually that all passed and signed by the governor?
I believe it might be. I'd have to go look it up. But I, I think when she.
I guess I was assuming we were going to get a request.
We can look in the minutes. I think she said that it was passed.
It has to be signed.
Has to be signed.
Has to be signed.
But I think your point's well taken.
Yeah.
Your point is well taken. I guess I was assuming that when somebody forms that commission, they're actually going to send out requests.
I don't know.
Formal request for people's names.
We might want to just keep it in the back of our mind. Because we'll need to come up with a name.
Do we still have our tickle file or? We have Paul.
Paul's our tickle file?
And, and commission members from Merrimack that we need to appoint.
Because we should get officially notified.
I, I would think so. Some of the state legislature ought to be officially notified.
One would.
One would hope.
We don't want to lose our opportunity.
I, yeah. Anybody else have comments from the council?
So it's going to be a month before we see each other?
Oh, my goodness.
It is. It's going to be hard to take. Well, unless you're at the Fourth of July festivities. And I would.
Have we been asked to do the breakfast?
I would point out that in talking with Bob Best, he would love to have us come out and help with the breakfast. He wasn't here at the last meeting. He wanted to let Neil step up and be in charge of the Fourth of July presentation. And so he overlooked that opportunity to
I was wondering.
Twist arms, but he's definitely looking for support from the council like he had last year. So anybody that's interested should, I guess, contact Bob. Or show up. Because they'll put you to work if you show up.
That might be more like it.
At 7:00 in the morning or something like that.
Yeah, that's right.
Was when they wanted to start cooking pancakes. They start serving at 8:00 as we read earlier. And they'll be fluffy pancakes, so.
I was going to say, what's?
Well, the ones I was cooking were fluffy. The other ones I can't attest to because I didn't see them.
I said a frisbees or. You got to do the pancakes. I was expecting eggs.
I got to the pancakes. You were, you did eggs.
With those big heat.
Fluffy eggs. Or at least scrambled ones, but anyway. So I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and encourage you to come out and, and support all of the, all of the programs from the 3rd of July on between the band concert, the Fourth of July activities, the parade, the pancake breakfast, the fireworks.
The run.
The runners, the and then the movie on the 5th. At Abbey Griffin Park, which I thought it was going to be at Watson, but it's at Abbey Griffin Park, so. That'll be cool.
Very good.
And the volleyball courts, which we hope, have, hope to have open by the 4th.
And remember, the midway is now moved back to the high school. So anybody listening, it's back at the high school, so.
Well, it'll be pretty obvious it's not at the upper elementary school.
I get that, but you know how people are. They'll see it and say, oh, it's not out this year. It's actually down at the high school. They'll have signage down there too.
And we have our flags out down Kid Daniel Webster Highway.
Yes, I noticed them today.
They look great. Had them out for a while now, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Bill, seconded by Barbara. Any all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? This motion is, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks. Please turn off your mics.